Call this meeting to order. We are very fortunate to have a Boy Scout here who is visiting us. And I would like everybody to stand and Trey, would you be willing to lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
I'd like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the great unity of us all.
Would you please remain standing for a moment of silence for the brave men and women in our troops overseas or at home, our EMTs, police, everybody that keeps us safe. Godspeed to them and give them the diligence to move forward with our protection. Godspeed to those that have given their ultimate with their life. Thank you.
Trey, we're delighted to have you here and we hope that you find the meeting interesting. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask them. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being livestreamed. The Board met in executive session for a personnel matter prior to tonight's meeting. This is going to be an abbreviated meeting. We have no emergency services reports, no financial report, no minutes and treasures report, no public hearings, but we have all business. We're reviewing the comments from the East Goshen Township Pipeline Task Force on the Adelphia Gateway Environmental Assessment. And I'm going to ask David to lead the discussion on that because he is liaison to that group.
Janet, yeah, the Pipeline Group has taken on the Adelphia issue. As you'll know, Adelphia has been asked to do an impact study, or I'm sorry, an environmental assessment, which they have done. We would like to have them do an environmental impact study, which is more comprehensive. FERC has directed commenters to kind of use what's pertinent or germane to your community. So what we have with Adelphia is we've got the in-the-ground pipeline and we have a valve station, which is pretty much across the street here. That valve station is going to be modified into a blowdown station, which means that it will be used in the case of emergency to vent methane gas from that pipeline. It also means that they'll do occasional maintenance where they'll test that valve to release methane into the environment. The Pipeline Task Force has been considering this as our new task force. It's the first recommendation from that task force to the Board for action. And so I'd like to introduce, can I do that now? Caroline, I'll introduce Caroline Hughes, who is the Chair of the Pipeline Task Force, to just give some comments on our deliberations and ask for recommendations.
No mic.
Hi, I don't have a mic, but I can speak wildly.
Whoa.
We need a mic for the line.
That's right, okay. Okay. Good evening. So, first of all, thank you. I just wanted to start by saying thank you for considering this list and recognizing how important it is to continue to engage with Adelphia as this is a prime opportunity for us to do what we didn't get an opportunity to do with Mariner, which is say things before the project is moving forward. And I agree that the environmental impact study is really something that we need to have information. Information is always a good thing. Would you like me to review the points or since they've been presented to the township and copies are available, do you have any questions about them?
I do not have any specific questions about the content of the recommendation and I'm in full support of it. Caroline, and I think it's a well-done series of recommendations to put forward to the Board for action tonight. One thing that would be probably effective would be to categorize these recommendations, call it a one and a two or an A and a B. The first being the focus on East Goshen Township and then the second being the broader aspects of the overall need for environmental impact statement. So that would be the only thing I would suggest in categorizing them. So we put East Goshen first, we hit our jurisdictional interest and then talk about the broader aspects of the need for the statement, the EIS statement. But other than that, I think you've, job well done.
Yeah, I mean, really what this comes down to is we want, we would like there to be more information given for, you know, with respect to the blowdown tower. What is the air quality? How often will that be? How noisy will it be? Things that will directly impact the township, things that will directly impact the health potentially of the people living immediately around it. And the EIS would show those things on a broader scale, talking about the same questions, the impact of the Marcus Hook area, which when there's potentially an issue, has a 30-mile radius of air quality impact. And so that does affect us. We're, I think we discussed last Thursday that we're 14 to 15 miles from Marcus Hook. So these are the things that even though Marcus Hook isn't directly near us, it does impact East Goshen, but we did have things that were specific, asking for a publicly available risk assessment, just so that we all understand what this project brings to the township.
So I think that if I can kind of summarize what the task force is involved in, we want to focus on the valve station. So, you know, how often will it re-release? Will the notice go to the public? How much material will be released? What is the decibel level when it goes off? Will it ever reach combustibility in any kind of atmospheric condition? Will it be activated mechanically or does it have to be activated manually? So the environmental assessment doesn't give us this information. The environmental impact study will ask for that kind of information. And then your Part B or Part Two will be, you're right, Marcus Hook is 14 miles away from East Goshen Township and so the air quality from Marcus Hook and maybe even from Quaker Town could reach this area. And we'd like an impact study to know more about that. So I think that your comments and that would be my summary of the request.
And also, we asked for the comment to include that Adelphia be very transparent in showing that they have received the proper permits that they need, that we think that that's important, to show that they're following the rules. So that's another thing that was discussed and is one of the things we want them to show definitively, that they are following all permit requirements, that they have obtained the proper state and federal permits.
Caroline, I want a second. Mike said I was involved, obviously, and I wasn't there either, so I did hear the whole discussion, but the one thing that occurred to me, I think David just mentioned it, some of the things he was talking about, and that is, in a blowdown situation, I think a question concerning how many they would anticipate in a year would be a question, but I think it's in what David talked about with respect to overall comments. It seems to me, if there were comments that you all discussed, particularly relative to the blowdown, which is here, here right in front of everybody, that they would be appropriate to incorporate into this. I do like the idea of the separation because you are, I believe, supposed to emphasize what's in your own community.
Absolutely.
More so than the overall, but since we have some overall, I think it's a great idea to put ours first and the general comments second, but that's just a layout thing. But I like those comments that David, or at least if I kept up with him, those extra comments that he was talking about, because I think it adds weight to the blowdown situation, the blow-off situation, whichever you call it.
Well, and the language used in what Adelphia submitted is very vague, you know, routine maintenance versus emergency, you know. We need more details. Yeah, exactly.
So I like, I like what you did plus what David's digesting the rest of the conversation with.
So I'd like to make a motion that the Board accept the recommendation of the Pipeline Task Force and then re-instruct our legal counsel to file a request for an environmental impact study from Adelphia.
Second. Okay. David, that includes all the comments, right?
Okay. Any other comments from the Board?
Oh, I think it's great. Appreciate all the work you did.
Absolutely. Any comments from the, from the audience?
I've got a comment on a separate issue to discuss.
Set it to separate issues.
Separate issue, but it's not related to this.
Okay, well, let's get this done first. All in favor?
Do we know if any other townships?
Yeah, if you, if you want to speak, you have to come to the mic.
Bernie, you're wearing, you're wearing out the rug going up to the microphone.
You didn't recognize me at PT.
No, I didn't. I recognized. Humbergate 94 Jefferson Way. Do we know if any other townships have requested an EIS?
I do. I don't know.
I don't.
I'm not aware of any, but you would have to go and search the document to see, well, first comment, I'm not aware of any other look that, I'm going to use an order to have it, but you'd have to search the document. But I would also note that comments aren't required to be received until Sunday, so it could be something that they're doing right now.
Because it would be wonderful if we could some way relay the information to other townships that we are requesting an EIS, maybe they have been reluctant to do it, maybe they would be considering it. There's about 25 townships along the route of Adelphia.
I will take it. I will send a copy, when I send yours, solicit to my associates in the management's world, so let them know now.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Bernie, I would think that without a doubt, the townships that have the compressor stations are certainly going to ask, if nothing else, they're going to ask about the impact of the compressor stations on their, on their community, I would think.
I just want to answer that I believe that Hughlin is preparing to make a similar request, but there are a lot of individuals that are doing so, but Hughlin Township, I believe, is also being criticized.
All right. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is passed. We will send it to Marjorie Morris.
Thank you, Caroline.
Yes, thank you so much. Next on our agenda, we have an interview for tax collector. Our tax collector resigned at the end of last year, so we have an opening for the tax collector. We have had one person request, request and what?
Just for everybody to be aware, typically when the Board does ABC interviews, those of you who are on ABC, the Board meets in the back room, it's considered a personal matter, they interview, interview the individual and then make an appointment. The law is very specific with regards to interviews for an elected position, tax collector's elected position, and so therefore, any interviews before that position has to be done in a public meeting. And we are in a somewhat of a time crunch. Since our tax collector resigned at the end of the year, the Board has 30 days to appoint a new person, and today is January 29th. So we are here, here, and we do have one applicant that responded to our request, Karen Batavia, and who has been a longtime East Goshen resident, who most of us already know.
Madam Chairman, if I could, that is my wife that's being interviewed for the position, so that we're totally transparent, I will be recusing myself and actually I'm going to leave the room, as long as you don't ask me to leave the building.
John, I think, I want to thank Karen for putting herself out there. But I think it would be appropriate, since there are people here, for John to let us know the process that we use with respect to the question of taxes.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The tax collector position, like a lot of positions in Pennsylvania local government, in many respects are vestiges of the 19th century. We're a more agrarian farm community and we rely on volunteers to do many of the key, key services that now in the 21st century paid staff do. In East Goshen, we have about 8,500 tax parcels, each of which gets a tax bill every year, also gets a tax bill from the county as well as the school district. But the state law requires that we have a tax collector. It is an elected position. I was the, until the end of the year, I was that position. But in practice, what we do, and 98, let's say, percent of municipalities in Chester County do, is the actual taxes are collected by professional staff in the office. It is a complicated process, involves mortgage companies, title companies, you know, obviously a very large volume of payments, bills going out and payments coming in. And so as part of the tax collector position, you know, one of the, one of the things that we do is, the township would still collect the taxes through agreement with the tax collector to basically deputize the township to collect the taxes. Nevertheless, we have to have the position, otherwise, I don't know, the world ends. Not to put too fine a point on it.
I think with that knowing, Karen, I think you're probably familiar with that, I'm sure Corman probably has mentioned to you.
He has, yes.
Anyway, I guess the obvious question is, there's not necessarily a whole lot of work to do, but there are certain things that you're obligated to do. What is the basic reason you, besides Corman, might have forced you to do something, what is the basic reason that you would like to do that, like the tax collector?
Well, first of all, I know that you are interested in having someone fill the position, and the reason I thought I would be a good candidate for that is I feel that I've used the township's parks. I take my grandkids to the park all the time, I walk all the time on all of the paths. We've gone to all of the wonderful days, the community days, the bicentennial, the pumpkin fest, and I found it to maybe be a way for me to give back a little bit. I've taken a lot from the township and maybe this is a way I could show my appreciation.
Are you aware that the annual compensation for this job is $1?
I am aware of that, I didn't even know it was a dollar, but that's fine.
I think more importantly, is there an awareness, is there an awareness of the fact that I, that right at the moment, you're sort of grandmothered in, but there is a point in time where it comes to additional training and exposure to the obligations that the tax collector has.
Sure.
And you're aware that?
I am. I'm willing to do that.
For those that don't know, Karen is a school teacher, or was a school teacher.
Retired, yeah.
A retired school teacher, so it's important to know that a tax collector has to do more than just appear before us. They, there's a, there's a program that they have to go through ultimately, and Karen will have to go through that in due time, and as long as you're aware of that. And it's a, it's a great paying job. It doesn't bring with it a 401K or anything like that, but it does put someone, we have a very efficient way of collecting it through John and his organization, a tax collector just fits in there, but it doesn't require a lot of work, we understand that. But there is a role to be played, and if it's necessary, then you have to, when the time comes, you have to go for, you have to go put yourself on the ballot and be elected by a township people.
Karen, are you still interested?
I guess so. I'd be happy. I'd be happy.
In that case, thank you. I would make a motion to fulfill the obligations of the Second Class Township Code and fill the vacancy for the elected tax collector at this time, appointing Karen Batavia to the East Goshen Township elected tax collector position.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any more comments?
Mike doesn't want to hear any more from me either.
Any more comments from the Board? Any comments from the audience?
Congratulations.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
My pleasure.
Your house is when Williams went and he reported to me. Congratulations. Carmen, could you?
Congratulations.
Carmen, could you grab a dollar from the candy container and give it to Karen for her first year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a, any other matter for, from John?
Yeah, real, real briefly here. And back in June, the General Assembly passed House Resolution 291, I think it was, which calls for the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue to basically investigate whether there would be any advantages to moving from the current system of collecting earned income taxes where, under Act 32, whereby taxes are collected by a local tax collector appointed at the county level, to moving that to the State Department of Revenue to collect those taxes, so sort of centralizing that system. At the time in June, this Board expressed some strong reservations about doing that. It would basically give up, well, we would essentially cede local control to Harrisburg. There's no, there's uncertainty about, you know, the sort of commissions that Harrisburg would charge, as well as what Harrisburg would do with our residents' tax dollars. The report that the Department of Revenue put out in response to that resolution just came out a few weeks ago. I had a chance to read it. It was actually a very well-written and thoughtful report. My kudos to whoever wrote it in Harrisburg. But at the end of the day, I think my reading on it was that it does effectively, it really laid out all of the pros and cons of moving to state-level collection of EIT, and there's a whole host of cons. There's eight-figure implementation costs, there's questions about how money could actually be dispersed to different municipalities, there's questions about how to deal with partial year residents, that don't have an easy fix. So it's my recommendation to the Board that we write a letter to our both Representative Committee and Senator Killian, urging them, in the event that there's any future legislation on this issue, to encourage them to vote against it and maintain the status quo.
Mr. John, thank you so much. I would also ask we go a step further and notify all of our townships around us and ask them if in uniformity, in uniformity, they will buy onto this power of the people. Harrisburg does not need control of East Goshen, I can tell you that for fact.
Well, I agree, Carmen. I think that's a great additional motion to share with our fellow municipalities in the county. John, I forget what word you used relative to the state, but I would refer to them more as commandeering and further eroding local control. Act 32, as it was constructed now and has been operating, John, I guess we've been in our eighth or ninth year under Act 32 with a county centralized collection administration through the Keystone Collection Group, which has done an excellent job. That is, that was the intent of Act 32 to having more organized accountability for earned income tax collection. We've done that. It's been very effective here. I can't speak to other counties, there were references in the report to other counties and having some road collectors creating issues. There was a vague reference and it was, I'm not sure where that, there's any inertia from that, to have now, the next step would be, as bills are now being introduced into the new session, the next step, if there were a legislator who was interested in bringing this forth to pursue a state-run bureaucracy of creating this, and as John said, that we're talking 50, 60, 70 million dollars a year, I think, with some of the startup costs, we don't need that.
Can we, can we have a motion?
Yeah. Motion would be to support the letter, to have our elected officials know at the state level that we are interested in maintaining Act 32 in the current capacity with centralized county.
Second, third, and fourth.
Okay. All in favor? Ah, sorry. Audience, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
I missed you.
No, that's okay. I had a comment unrelated to what he said. I'm sorry to leave off.
All right, we're up to public comments, if anybody wishes to make a comment on some...
Rod Coco, 633 North Speakman Lane, Westchester. Just very briefly, I wanted to really thank Rick and his entire staff. I've lived in Bowtree for 30 years and I'm just continually amazed at the quality in the way they handle snow and inclement weather. Just tonight, before we came, the salt truck was down, you always brine before a lot of these storms, as much as Marty's threatened to not plow my street, it always gets plowed in a very expeditious manner. So I, just my hat's off to, you know, it's one of those unsung jobs. Coming from an area where I managed a fleet for 16 years, I'm really pretty aware of what it takes to maintain this township from a vehicle standpoint, and, you know, you go to bed at night and these guys in this kind of weather are out at all hours, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and I just want to, you know, publicly, you know, thank the township and particularly Rick and his team for, you know, the job they do day in and day out.
Thank you.
Secondly, Rick, I've got some good news, bad news regarding, you know, one of my pet peeves, and that's the flooding on Boot Road and Paley Pike. The good news, and once again, thanks to your effort, you dug a trench on that one side and the water seems to completely dissipated, and that's great. Unfortunately, the bad news is now it's pounding on the other side of the intersection, closest to the Dunkin' Donuts. When we came down here tonight, there's standing water completely across the turn lane and almost halfway through the, through the lane. You know, I understand that is, you know, a PennDOT road, but tonight's going to be a textbook example, when, you know, it gets below freezing, which it's close to now, that's going to become a solid sheet of ice, you know, right before that intersection. So I'll be more than happy to call PennDOT. I know it's been a longstanding issue between PennDOT and the township, but wanted to make you aware of the fact that it's, you know, as bad as I've ever seen it when we came down here tonight.
Thank you.
I'll take care of it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hey, Ron, if you call PennDOT, call Chester County Maintenance and ask for Bob Kennedy.
Okay.
He's the manager still, right, Rick?
Before Bill says anything, I just want to correct what Ron said. I never said that I would stop the snow bells from plowing the street. What I said was that it would be a 10-foot drift in front of his driveway, that he'd have to make ready before he got to work. That's, there's a big difference between shutting down the street and putting that 10-foot pile in front of his driveway. So when you get home tonight, Ron, God bless you.
Bill?
Bill Legaman, 629 North Speakman Lane. And first of all, I'd like to second Marty's comments, because I live two doors down from Ron, and he said, "Bill, I'll take care of your driveway right in front of Ron's." What I'd like to do is, first of all, I'm the co-chair for the Pipeline Task Force. Caroline is the chairperson, I'm the co-chair. But I'd really like to first recognize David Schuwe and Rick Smith, because this thing got organized last year, we're probably on our fourth meeting now, we're starting to get a little bit of traction, but their advice to this Pipeline Task Force is just absolutely impeccable. Rick, I call you Savant sometimes with your knowledge about everything that has to do with everything, and David, the experience you bring, so I'd like to thank you for that, number one. Second thing is, we have one, what we would say, success story that I guess we could report to the general public, and that's what you all voted on tonight, that we're finally going to ask Adelphia, or FERC via Adelphia, to have an environmental impact statement, which is huge, and that's step number one. But we'd like to tonight move on to step number two and thank you for your intervention into the PUC safety complaint against Mariner East for the township. into the PUC safety complaint against Mariner East for the township. Really appreciate that. However, we need to get the Westchester Area School District on board. So last night, I attended my first school board meeting. Caroline was in attendance, Judy was in attendance, Karen Miller, so we had four of the five members of the task force at the meeting last night. Judy had an opportunity to speak at the end about pipeline issues, as did I, and I specifically requested, and I read from the notes that came up from the task force meeting, that Caroline took it upon herself to put a go petition out online. And as of tonight, we're up to over a hundred and eighty signatures in seventy-two hours, and basically what these folks are signing on for, and I'd like to read it, "We call upon the Westchester Area School District to join Downingtown Area School District, Twin Valley School District, and Rose Street Media School District in petitioning to intervene in the safety complaint against Sunoco's Mariner East project filed with the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission. We want the school board to uphold their duty to the safety and well-being of our students and staff and stand alongside the other school districts' parents and residents in taking meaningful action." So I guess my request here from tonight from the board, that you folks have already signed on, I've signed on as an intervenor, is use your influence to send a letter, send an email to the Westchester Area School Board to say, "We need them on board with this."
Bill, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What, and this is for, for a couple of reasons. How were you received last night? And I mean, was it by the school board? Did it seem to be controversial? Did it seem to be interesting, or did they feel like they wanted to get out?
Well, I'll start from my point of view. We were at the tail end of the school board meeting. It was a public comment for any non-agenda items you have to sign in. Judy actually showed me how to do that. Thank you. Sign in, you kind of go on the end. So half your general population is left at that point in time. I think it was very well-received as far as the comments from Judy and myself, and I did remind Dr. Scanlon that I was at a meeting with him last year. David, I know you weren't in attendance, I know we had quite a few people in attendance at the meeting, but one of the things that Bill Turner from Emergency Services stated is where they stood in trying to get their environmental impact study statement from Sunoco. I reminded him that two weeks ago in this room, we had emergency services personnel here, including Bill Turner, and then I asked Bill Turner if he's received that emergency study from Sunoco, and he said, "We requested it almost two years ago, we have not received it." However, one of the competitors, we asked for on a Wednesday and got it on a Friday, and I reminded Dr. Scanlon of that last night, told him this fact. Tolton doesn't cost them anything. I don't understand what the hesitancy is of the Westchester Area School District to sign on board with this. So my request to the board would be, again, just as a request, this is not something, I guess, you could formally approve tonight, is to use your influence to contact the school district that is responsible for a lot, that has a lot of this pipeline within its jurisdiction. I think Lisa Lane, Lisa Drive is within their jurisdiction where all the samples are and has the Mariner Pipeline shut down. So with that, really would like your support on that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, let me, let me respond to that in just a second. I mean, if the board, Carmen, I don't know, you must have, you must have magic finger. Bill is asking the board to do something. We go to either decide to do it or not to do it. It doesn't, it seems to me that, like we have done in other things, that we support the efforts of our residents where they seem to be appropriate to support, and I don't see any downside to having John or Rick write a letter on our behalf to say that we're the school, to tell them we would love to see them take, you know, the max opportunity to think this through and join in the participation in this effort. So I would put a motion on the floor that we do that, if there's a second. I don't know if there will be or not, but I think it's a reason why we requested. Stackill's making...
I'll second that, and in fact, the friendly amendment, the letter that Rick is going to send to our fellow municipalities can be piggybacked to Dr. Scanlon and the school board.
I think it's separate.
You know, separate, okay. I, I resent...
The school board, the school board should send it to you. I don't think you want to mix.
I will second the motion that Mr. Shane has made then.
And we'll send the letter to the school board, because Dr. Scanlon, the board would have authorized it.
I should, that's correct.
The record to the school board with a copy.
The school board with a copy to Dr. Scanlon.
And I believe we have, one of the representatives is from East Scotia.
Yes.
I'm not sure who it is, but...
But there's other ways of...
We'll send it to all the schools, we'll send it to all, one to each school.
Yes.
Good. Thank you, Bill.
Just to take them, just wrap it up.
Any other, all right, let's go. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim. Scott wanted to say something.
Scott wanted to say something.
You want to say something? You have to go, you have to go to the mic and you have to give your name and address for our minutes.
You have to talk into the mic, bend it down a little bit.
Trey Back, 142119. I'd just like to thank you guys for allowing me to come to this meeting. It really helped me out with my merit badge I'm working on right now. I'm hoping to complete it, and it's working towards Eagle, and it'll really help out later on.
We're glad you came. We're very glad you came.
Trey, just for what it's worth, you don't have to thank us for coming here. It's your right, and this isn't the United States, to come to any, all these meetings have to be public. You have a right to come to these meetings, and you have a right to participate and be heard.
What do you call the White House? Our House, right? What do you call this township building?
Our Township Building. It's not ours, meaning us. It's ours.
Rick knows everything there is to know about White House. He's also our parliamentary figure.
Great, good luck.
We thank you for coming here.
Just for, for public information, on January 31st, which is Thursday, there is going to be a meeting at Fugue Middle School, set up by Representative Comittee and Senator Killian, to just have a question and answer session with PUC, DEP?
PUC and DEP, PHMSA, I can't call them, can't call them from PHMSA.
We tried.
There'll be four people there from PUC, and there's supposed to be three people there from DEP, and thanks to Representative Comittee and Senator Killian.
And it's at Fugue?
It's at, it's at...
At Fugue.
Oh, it's at Fugue?
At Fugue.
Seven o'clock, Thursday night.
So please attend. Any questions that you have for those representatives? We need, we, it took a while before we got anyone here from PUC, and it's important that we ask whatever questions we have at this point in time and hopefully get some answers.
I, I think it's important to know that both the Senator and the state rep responded to our request. There's been a number of people, some of which are here, that asked us to do this, so it's been in the mill for a while to make this happen. Now, in my travels, I have spoken to some of the folks in other communities, and they are planning to go to that meeting. Now, I don't know if it's widespread or not, but there could be a fair number of people. It's very unfortunate that the PHMSA people are not going to be there, but they're not, and I suspect that, so we're probably going to get a reasonable discussion from, from the PUC. They've been very responsive in some of the things where I've been at the same meeting, I know Ricky's been there too. They've been very solicitous of answering questions where they can, as long as there's not some lawsuit pending somewhere along the line. Now, there is a lot of them, I must admit, so you can't, you can't ask something about them and get them to respond. The DEP is, it depends, I guess, upon who comes there. They have a role to play, and sometimes you get some valuable information, and sometimes you don't. But for those that are interested, it's definitely going to be worthwhile to attend, and I certainly want to publicly thank Caroline Comittee, Tom Killian, for enabling us to have this meeting on Thursday night.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, people, for coming.
Did you get the job?
Yeah.
I'm going to scout this up.
And then when you just, when you get an Eagle Scout and you need to do your project, maybe you go to East Scotia, maybe you'll be able to do something here. Hi, Trey. Good luck.
Good luck to you.
Oh, that's good. He picked a good meeting. Sometimes the boy scouts come, it's like two and a half hours.
Be careful. Hey, Eric. You're on the right before you get the CAC, right? Yeah, so this is Valley, you're a Valley Creek person, right? Yeah. Wesley Woods in here, right? Yeah, you're in the back.
Hey, Bob.